All right, call over the regular meeting in the City Council of Perry. February 21st, 2023 at 6:15. No call please.
Okay, lines. Marshall?
Here.
White?
Here.
Coffee?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Bond?
Here.
Calderon?
Here.
Strowler?
Here. I do declare a quorum. The evening invocation will be by chaplain Josh Bell.
Would you please pray with me? O God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now and in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will lead us home. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of the city and every city in your own image, with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling you have given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbor as ourselves. I thank you tonight, God, for these, your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our city council members, our law enforcement, our fire department, and our dispatchers. I ask that you give thanks for the way of giving our service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of us all here. We all come to this room tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joy and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together, O God, in your love and peace. In your son Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Item one is the consent agenda. There's four items there.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown? Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes.
Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda. Item five, proclamation, combination, reports, inquiries by the governing body. We do have one proclamation to make tonight. It's pretty special to us. Mr. Duke, would you come forward, please? Yep, over here. You all may wonder why all these guys are here tonight. This is for Stephen. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
He's been with us for 25 years now, and we're really proud of him for that and proud of your family and supporting you through this. You have a great family, man.
Thank you.
So, I want to read this to you. It says, "Whereas, following the retirement of former fire chief David Hatfield, Stephen Duke was hired to backfill an open position whereas Stephen Duke was hired as an intro level firefighter EMT from the former fire chief David Henry. Whereas, in the beginning, his firefighting and emergency medical service career on February 23rd, 1998, Stephen Duke is currently the longest tenured employee of the city of Perry." It's pretty special. Thank you. "Whereas, currently serving as deputy chief of the city of Perry, Stephen Duke is a leader among firefighters and EMT professionals and serves as an inspiration to those in this emergency service field of work. Now, therefore, I, Bill Strowler, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Perry, the state of Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim March 1st, 2023, as deputy chief, Stephen Duke Day." And ask our citizens to acknowledge his great service for over a quarter of a century to our city and Perry community and witness whereof I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Perry of Oklahoma to fix this 21st day of February 23rd, 2023. Sir, thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
I didn't expect that. Thank you. I guess I would say thank you. It is the best service on the planet. The fire service is the best service on the planet. You don't get a chance to do it here in these communities, so for that, that's pretty neat. I had no idea. And obviously, my family is giving me the opportunity to do this.
Would you like to introduce your family?
My family is my wife Shelby. I think everyone knows her. My son Gavin, my other son Mason, and I invited them with me tonight. I had no idea what was going to happen, so, anyway. Everyone, thank you.
You really look sharp, too, by the way. All right, item six, the city manager's report, the monthly project update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start off with an update of what I call envelope gate. If you remember, the last bills for utility had an errant envelope addressed to a municipality in Michigan. So, we were a little concerned about that, actually a lot concerned about that, but to date, we've received five envelopes from that municipality in Michigan. Four have already been processed. One was processed today, obviously with no penalty to the customer. Really thankful that this is the way it's been unfolding. It could have been a lot worse, a lot more involved, and so we thank Autumn Jado, our utility billing and customer service supervisor, for her work and also her counterpart in Michigan. It's working out good so far. Saturday, March 11th, approximately 2,000 bicyclist will be passing through Perry between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., coming from the west on Highway 77, going east on Cedar Street, and then passing on out by Grace Hill Cemetery. Perry will be serving as a rest area with porta-potties and water filling stations. Riders will not be staying overnight like previous events. Many of our civic and church groups will be making homemade cookies for the riders to take, and we'll be passing out more information as we get closer to the events. This event was here in 2017. Love the community, had a great time when they came through, so they wanted to do this again. So, excited to have those folks come just for a brief moment, just to visit downtown. So, that's all I've got right now. Any questions or anything? Thank you, council.
Thank you. Somebody outside wants to talk to you. Item seven, chief financial officer's report.
Well, guys, just a handful of little things to mention tonight. Nothing super big. One of the highlights would be our PCA number. It's our power cost adjustment. As you'll remember, we've been talking that that number had been up in the fours and had been really high going back into last August and September, and Memphis causing some really high electric bills. That's why whenever you look at your financials, why we're already over 75% of our electric wholesale costs. But anyhow, good news is, second month in a row, we're under a penny in our net number. If you all remember, our goal back to even with whenever Earl came down and we finally sat down and hashed it out. Were you on the council when we hashed that? Anyhow, you guys might have been there. Anyhow, Earl wanted it fixed, and Earl was tired of PCA being those high numbers, you know, three and four cents, you know, every month. So, we fixed the rates. We did a whole lot of iterations and calculations. Got it down where sometimes you're negative, sometimes you're positive, but we found at least a number that worked. Well, it worked really well until the last, you know, six months. In the last six months, it's just been through the roof. Good news is, wholesale cost of electric back down, so we're seeing that, you know, it'll be about a six cent PCA adjustment. So, Earl, God rest his soul, would be happy that we're at least under a penny in that net number. So, happy to announce that piece. CPI is the next piece that I've been hitting a lot, you know, 6.9%. You know, as I've kind of talked and discussed, you know, I'm fine with the CPI being high as long as we see our sales tax staying up in those numbers. This will be the first month that our sales tax has not continued to rise. Matter of fact, we are at a zero percent increase on sales tax over prior year same month. So, we are now finding that break even number, and my concern is what is going to come next as far as those dollars go. You know, just last week, the headlines, we're talking about wholesale price index up over 7% on wholesale goods, which again is another disfavorable piece for us in looking at the forward. It also said that we've hit a record high on consumer debt, and consumer debt and default rates continue to increase, you know. Some credit cards that don't have limits are over 22% now in their markup number in total. So, we are really going to, I'm afraid, going to start seeing some spending issues and dollars coming in. The other thing that we have to remember is, I've talked about it, our sales tax has been driven with a higher because of a lot of construction and a lot of those pieces. So, unfortunately, whenever I start talking over the next 12 months, I'm going to be comparing to some of our very highest sales tax numbers and some of the best that we've had. Don't worry, whenever we budget, whenever we do those kind of things, we're going to budget as if those dollars are not going to be in there. So, I won't put us in a bad spot as far as that goes next year, but I just want you to know that I may not be saying, hey, we're up over prior year, at least until we get another 13 to 15 months out. So, I think this is the start of it. Now, we just have to kind of see where that piece goes. Now, what is the advantage of that number? The advantage of that number is, you know, overall, we've had about $114,000 of additional sales tax collections. You know, we mentioned above in the item of the public hearing, if you were reading the background, you know, we're going to use $54,000 of that as our CDVG grant match. We're going to use our ARPA money and another $54,000 of that to kind of make everything work and get those dollars to balance out. So, you know, we've got $60,000, give or take, there left. I'm going to talk about that whenever we get to items down below, you know, whenever we start talking about the motors and what we're going to do. If you want the funding request for that, we're going to use up the rest of this excess sales tax that we've collected this year, is my suggestion. That's where I think we pay for that and how we move forward on moving those pieces. So, I did want to kind of lay that out. We do have extra money. We've had it this year. I do not anticipate without, you know, the next industry and even with new industry, just with the decreased spending. I'm not super optimistic about where our sales tax is going for the next 12 months if we look at it on a historical number trying to compare back. A couple of other things. If you're looking at your financials, you'll see, you know, we should be about 58% on budget. So, we're setting pretty much all of the departments for the current month expense are within what our budget was and expected. The differences and the variances you see are really related to prior month expenses, bigger things like fire trucks, buying land, and those kind of things. So, nothing really big. Our hotel motel tax was very strong, though, deposit for the month. So, in December, $22,000. So, we do appreciate those holiday travelers, and we like to see those numbers up. The other piece that, as I just pointed out, or at least talked, if you look at PMA, you know, our cost of electricity, you know, we're setting it 79% on wholesale cost of electricity. So, that's that PCA adjustment, and that's why electric bills have been so high. It's because we're getting charged those higher numbers. Do you guys have any questions? Because if not, I'm going to hit my five minutes, and then at that point, Christie like buzzes me in and says, yep, some thought coffee.
Any questions for Russ? Thank you, Russ.
Yes, sir.
Item eight, items pertaining to the city of Perry's application for funds for certain water line improvements pursuant to FY23 CDVG water wastewater construction set aside grant, including item eight, discussion and action to approve the citizens' participation plan. Marita?
Hi.
Would you like to come share?
Well, I will. I guess I'm just the public hearing.
It's all right. It was very uneventful.
Okay, okay. So, it's CDVG time, and basically what we're doing, same thing as we did for the fire truck grant, same process. The only thing is, we're going to have to look at the water and sewer rate structure, get you guys some more points there. And I'm assuming everything's going to be approved. It's on the agenda for the grant. So, I have, the application's pretty much completed. I've been working a lot with Matt. We've gotten together, gotten the scope of the project worked out, and he'll discuss that probably some more in here in a little bit. But the application, like I said, I have it almost completed. All I need's the documents from tonight's meeting. Matt's working on the preliminary engineer report, and he told me he would have it this week, by the end of the week, and I'll have it ready to submit. City doesn't have to do a new income survey. You guys did that on the fire truck grant. It's good for five years. So, hopefully, we'll get this grant, get the project done, close it out, come back and apply for some more money. So...
The citizens' participation plan, is that just like a public hearing?
Yes, that's basically, it's basically just a document that says that we're going to have a public hearing at the beginning of the grant process. All the public's invited to participate at any time. They can come to any council meeting, voice their concerns, and we'll have another public hearing to close the grant out. So, that's what that is.
Okay.
Yep.
If you need to stay there a second. Counsel, we need a motion to approve that citizens' participation plan.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you.
Item B is discussion and action to approve Resolution 2023-01 to make the application. That's pretty much just everything you're talking about.
Yes, that resolution is basically just saying that the council's giving the mayor approval to sign any documents or forms related to the grant.
So, we need a motion for that resolution, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you.
Item C, discussion and action to approve Resolution 2023-02 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, determining, designating, and setting aside $600,000 of the local match and leverage amount for its application for the Community Development Block Grant under the FY23 CDVG Water Wastewater Construction Set Aside Grant. Russ did say that the $600,000, we have $546,000 in our, in ARPA money?
ARPA.
And then we have $54,000 coming from just our set aside?
Yes.
Carry market cash reserves. Okay. Do you have anything to add to that?
Only that this money that you're pledging right now, it's only if the grant is funded.
Thank you. Any questions on any of that? All right, we'll accept a motion on that then.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you.
Marita, thank you very much for coming.
Yes, thank you, guys. I will tell you guys this, that the application's due there first. We won't know if it's funded until probably end of August versus September, so...
Thank you very much.
It's still a few months out. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item nine, consider approval of ordinance number 2023-01 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 18 of the Perry Municipal Code 2022 by the amendment of subsection A of section 17-413 entitled Water Rates, providing for a new revenue neutral adjustment in the water rates to achieve a maximum points when applying for the state or federal grants, providing for the reduction from 1,500 gallons to 1,000 gallons for the base rate and eliminating all references to cubic feet, providing for repealer savings, codification, severability, and declaring emergency. That's option one. Option two is to consider approval of ordinance number 2023-01 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 18 of the Perry Municipal Code 2022 by amending the section A of section 17-413 entitled Water Rates, providing for a near revenue neutral adjustment for the water rates to achieve a maximum points when applying for state and federal grants, providing for an increase from 1,500 gallons to 2,000 gallons for the base rate and eliminating all references to cubic feet, providing for repealer savings, codification, severability, and declaring emergency. Mr. Meacham?
Well, bottom line, in order to maximize points on the CDVG grant, we have to have a utility rate that is increasing in thousand gallon increments up to the first 5,000, and then after that, it doesn't really matter how they increase. That was what Marita charged me with whenever she called and said, if you want more points, we've got to do this. So, this is really kind of more of a housekeeping piece. You guys will remember, we really based, we used to always run under cubic feet, you know. Somebody tell me what a cubic foot is, you know, as far as it goes to water. Well, it's about 7.48 gallons is what it comes down to. Nobody understands that. Nobody ever understood it. I honestly think it was probably done just so we could confuse everybody. They'd never really know how much water they were using. They'd just pay their bill and go on down the road. That's at least the theory that I keep on telling my clients whenever we talk about why do we even have this cubic fit number and why are we even talking cubic feet? Well, nobody knows what it is, so it's arbitrary. You can't control it. We'll just go on down the road. Bottom line, side of it, what we're doing here is we're trying to put in line those rates into those thousand gallon increments. Kind of presented two options as far as this goes. I like really the first one, and I'll tell you because it doesn't penalize anybody for not using 2,000 gallons, which I think is what you all will like the most. The whole goal in this, we're not increasing rates. We're not doing anything like that, but we're just trying to get us to 1,000 gallon increments and getting those running up. So, pretty much what we did was just back out, you know, the 1,000 gallons, figured out what was in the 1,500, took the difference off, get to a base number that's without gallons, and then start adding them back at incremental cost. Now, if you notice, $3.30 to $3.31 to $3.32, I mean, on 1,000 gallons, an extra penny, these net differences, like I said, are not going to add up to anything that's significant in the total. I ran a preliminary calculation. It may end up costing us over the next six months somewhere between $8,000 and $12,000 is what the net cost is. But I didn't want to jack rates up, you know, because then everybody's saying, well, you gave me a rate increase. That's what I'm trying to avoid. We didn't, we're not increasing rates. It's just we're recreating and reallocating those scales so that we can get them as close as we can to falling out at the totals that they were experiencing in the past. So, my suggestion, if we're going to do this, would be to go with the first option, which sets a base 1,000 gallons at $25.03 and then starts charging per gallon thereafter. The other option is to set the base at 2668, I think it was, I don't remember how it was that, yeah, 2668, but you have to get, but you get 2,000 gallons for that. Well, we do have some that don't get to 2,000 gallons. So, this is the most equitable way to get that mid-group down to the lowest number in base and then just let them out back. You guys have questions?
I recommend the one that you suggested. I don't even want to put in there, but they may raise it to $1.65 right now.
Well, the $1.65 would buy you the next 500 gallons, is effectively what it does. No, please adopt the first one. That's what I, that's what I hope you make.
After reading it through a couple of times, I felt like the first one would be the one that I would be most in favor of.
I think, to be clear, the first one could save some lesser volume households a little, a few dollars.
Yes.
Right?
Correct, correct, yeah. They could save...
It wouldn't necessarily increase on lower volume usage. It would decrease.
Correct.
Was that a motion, Gloria?
I will put that in a form of a motion if there's no other...
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you.
Item 10, consider approval, oh, yeah, motion or emergency, sorry.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you.
Item 10, consider approval ordinance number 2023-02 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 17 of the Perry Municipal Code 2022 by the amendment of section 17-209 entitled enumerating reasons for termination of the utility services, termination of services, providing for specificity, and deleting certain reasons for disconnection of public utility services by the addition of a section 17-209A entitled Disconnection of Utility Services Without Notice, providing for certain reasons when utility services can be disconnected without notice, providing for repealer savings, codification, severability, and declaring emergency. Bryce, would you like to talk about what you've got going on here?
Currently, in order to terminate your utility service, it has to be based on a reason. Those reasons are set out in section 17-209. But before we can, so we have to have a reason. And secondly, we have to give you written notice. That's what our own policy provides. And that notice, which I don't have that ordinance here, but that notice provides for written notice that you, and you receive between four and seven days. It's from the day to mailing, it's between four and seven days later. So, you get written notice mailed to your house. Tell you, the way we used to do it is we used to put hangers on your door. It was a 48-hour notice period, but the city wanted to go to mailed notice because of the cost of having someone go out and put a hanger door notice, so we felt at least four days is sufficient to get a card mailed to your home. Besides that, in most instances, you know, you know it's going to be turned off because you haven't paid your bill, you know? But that isn't the only reason. There are other reasons why we can, we can turn on your water or your electric. Fair to pay a deposit, fair to follow rules, misrepresenting your facts for purposes of obtaining service under some alias, a refusal to grant access. And so, they're all listed. What we did is we kind of looked at this and we said, well, there ought to be some instances where we don't have to give you prior notice. And I don't know why we didn't have that, Russ, because there ought to be some, like when you ask for it to be connected. There's one. If you ask for it to be connected, why would we, why would we give you notice of that? Another one is, what if you're disconnected and you come on and hook it back up again? You know, are we going to let you run for four to seven days of free electricity? No, I don't think so. We're going to come out and disconnect it. And so, what we did is we provided for this additional section. Another instance, there's water spewing out into the street. Or there's sewer that's soaking your front yard. We've had that. I've had, I've had it in some communities where it's been so bad, the sewer, that bugs have infested the grounds where you just walk and there's just a crunching sound, a crunching soggy sound underfoot from the sewer. although we don't have to give you that four to seven days notice, you know, at the time that we disconnect, we're going to try to get you notice by putting it on your door, by getting you some kind of notice of what we did, so you don't come home and go, wow, what happened, you know. But it isn't going to be that mailed notice. So, what we did is, this is really just a cleaning up of the, of the code, providing for time when notice is required. If you're tampering with the utility meter, you know, once again, we're going to, we're going to disconnect your service. You know, many times, you know, opening and shutting the ballcock off on your, on your water bill, that, that can break the antenna that's down there, you have to be careful in doing that, so we don't want people to be turning off their service either. So, that's really what this ordinance is. Really, the only thing other than shifting some of these things around, making some liable for notice and others for not notice, as I've sent out, we did add a section to that first ordinance of section eighty-three, fair to post a deposit, or to, or to make a payment in line that's required under the code, or any other lawful charge. You would get notice for that, really what seventeen three ten is, is that requirement to pay for your capital improvements for your electric service, to prepay those. So, we've had a little issue about that, and we've actually been looking at this ordinance for two months, but as we decided to bring it forward to you today, that was something that had come up, so we did add that, and that's really the only thing that's added, I guess, under eighty-one. We did add some language which talks about the different ways that you can not pay your bill, you can actually pay it, but the check's no good, or you can pay it, but there's no money in your, in your, in your debit account, or you can pay it and the credit card doesn't work, or the like, so. It's really just an ordinance to get our procedure up to proper form, and so that it makes sense. We've given that to utility billing, I think utility billing, the city clerk, and Ross, you agree, correct?
I think it's important that, that we try to maintain control of our accounts, not let people get delinquent, or do things that's against our policies, we need, we need some control factors. I think Bryce has done a good job correcting this.
Motion to approve ordinance?
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes. Post on emergency, please.
Submit.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes. Post on emergency, please.
Submit.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes. Post on emergency, please.
Submit.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroll?
Yes.
We'll let him give a speech, but he's-
Yeah.
Did you say speech? You want me to talk some more?
He was kidding.
Just, you know, as one of your municipalities that you represent, we're really proud of you, okay?
Well, thank you.
Item twelve.
Love you too.
Yeah, don't forget who nominated you, okay? Consider approval ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh three of the city councils of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, amending chapter seventeen, article two of the Perry Municipal Code twenty twenty-two by amending the section fourteen dash two oh one entitled application for a permit, providing for mechanical compaction and offense for installation not completed in accordance with article two, the amendment of section fourteen two oh four entitled to fill excavation approval and specifications by requiring mechanical compaction after completing the work after a cut, bore, excavation, or other installation permitted under article two, in this article two, providing for repealer savings, codification, severability, penalty, and declaring emergency. So, Larry, we'll get you to speak to this. Bryce did run us a new, a new copy of this, there was one word that was wrong in repairing, but anyway, go ahead, Larry.
One of the things that we've been having an issue with is folks that come out and request a permit, or don't request a permit, and don't follow the restrictions that we have, the procedures that we have, especially with mechanically compacting their refill. Those, they'll perhaps lay a line, throw some dirt over it, and then, over the next period, a couple of months, maybe a year, maybe five years, that line begins to sink, and we have an issue there. So, what we're asking is that every so often, once they do the fill, they mechanically compact it, not just throw some in, step on it a little bit, but mechanically compact it at these different levels. And also, that it, whatever the surface was, whether it be asphalt, gravel, concrete, that they replace that fill with that particular surface, as it was originally. So, that's, that's the gist of this, we've had some folks that, that just throw fill in, put something, you know, cover it, wrap their hands, and they're done. And that causes us and the property owners issues farther down the line, so we want it done right the first time. So, that's what this is about.
So, are you saying like, say our local plumbers put in a water line or sewer line, they have to mechanically compact that, that line back in?
Yes, sir. So, that's, that was the only thing that was really, one of the things that was missing in this ordinance was the mechanical part.
By mechanical, you're talking about using a tamper, you're talking about using the bucket on the excavator, there's not-
Preferably, an electronic, we had a mechanical tamper, we use that, we like that, we think it does a lot better job. We wouldn't, when you, when you fill and complete, and you put back the fill as it was, concrete or whatever it may be, sometimes folks like to run a heavy truck over it, and that doesn't quite do what we need it to do.
So, how do we determine proper compaction?
Our inspector has to go out at certain times, coordinating this with, with the contractor, and make certain that he sees it, make certain that-
So, so if, so if a plumber comes out, and they're going to put a new water line into my house or something, before they cover it up, we have to coordinate, they have to coordinate with the inspector to get the inspector out there, so then if it takes longer for getting the inspector out there, and the plumber is charging us by the hour, it's going to cost the homeowner more money.
That's a possibility.
And this is only for boring and cutting that's under a street or alley, it's not in your yard?
Right, yeah, just in the alley.
But the sewer lines, our sewer lines go into the alleys from our homes.
Right.
So, so it could, it could come back to the homeowner, and your water lines are in the alley.
What part of the sewer lines and water lines are the responsibility of the city, and what part is the responsibility of the homeowner?
Everything to the connection with the main.
Now, the main is the city, is everything that comes from the main to your house is the responsibility of the homeowner, or from the, from the meter.
But the city's responsible for the connection, right?
Yeah, yeah, from, from the water meter, it's not accurate, from the water meter to your house is the homeowner's, but most time on the sewer, it's from the water, where they tap the main, the sewer main, to your house.
And where is that usually located, like right by the road?
It could be in the alley, it could be out front, it could be, it's in front of my house.
It could be in your neighbor's yard.
Exactly.
You also have ONG that's going through the alleys as well, the gas lines. From what I've witnessed, those are usually the worst ones.
Yeah, they don't get in a hurry.
What is good is we have, is we have a franchise with them, and we have a provision in our franchise, we just need to enforce it on, on their work in our, in our alleys. If they are not tamping it down, if it's settling, and the like, we need to, that's the good thing of having a franchise agreement, so we need to refer to that, and then, you know, direct proper correspondence to, to ONG.
That may be, I could swear we talked about mechanical compaction before, and it may have been that agreement or something, or agreement like that that we previously discussed, if I can remember what it was. But that's probably not the only expense they're going to have to worry about, though, because if you're going to compact everything mechanically, you're also going to have to haul in more dirt.
That's a good possibility.
But this, this is saying only in places that are across or through any street or alley, so if it's in your yard, you don't have to do the mechanical compact, right? So, most of the, if not all, of these distances would be things that the city would be responsible for.
Uh-uh.
No?
Because your sewer main, because your sewer goes through the main, it's in the alley.
Right, so you'd be connecting to our service.
In the alley.
Can I, can I give an example?
Okay, thank you.
And I think one of the main issues that we're focusing on it, and saying in the alleys, in the, in the easements, is a lot of your sewer taps are directly in the center of the alley. What's happening is, is some of the contractors will come in, they'll dig that up, which is fine, you have to dig it up to do it, but what we're really running into is they're just dumping all the dirt back in, no gravel, that, you know, if it was a gravel alley to begin with, so, you know, when they get done, that alley should look like it did before they did the excavation. You shouldn't see any dirt in the alley any longer, you know, they're not packing it, and then, you know, then your alley's just a mud hole for, you know, every hole that they've done. And especially when you start having multiple houses down the road, then that whole block of alley turns into that. So, basically, you pack it, and then your gravel goes back on top, looks like you never did anything, and that, that, we remain, you know, the alley's still good after that. That's kind of where the issue lies. I don't think we're having necessarily on the private property, you know, that's kind of their deal, but it's basically where we're in the alleys and the easements.
So, for those that have connections in the alleys, those would be citizens that would have to maybe pay a little bit extra to have it done the right way with the compaction and everything.
It's a possibility, isn't it?
They, they should have been doing this all along.
Right, right.
I think we're talking about an enforcement issue as much as anything now, you know, now we have something that we can actually-
On paper.
Yeah, yeah.
And the word's mechanical, it was not in there previously.
Does, the, the questions do bring up a good point, I mean, how do we, we're saying mechanical, but that could be a bucket, that could be-
That's a lot. It could be a truck.
Yeah. I typically don't like the gray area stuff.
Yeah. So, Bryce, is this a whole new ordinance?
No, just what's underlying.
Okay, so, to what, to what Brian is saying, he was talking about if, if, if they tear up a gravel alley, they have to put gravel back, okay, we already got that, that's-
That's correct.
That's not, that's not anything new.
That's right, that's not new.
Right?
Okay.
So, we already, we already have, you made the statement, I'm not trying to say anything, I'm just saying that you made the statement, now we have some meat, that, that we already had.
Right.
Is it a timing issue? Is that, is that what you're talking about, it's more of a timing, when they get it done? Probably know the alley that you're talking about.
Well, yeah, that's-
Well, we were building multiple houses.
That's that alley, there's no doubt.
Right. But we, but we fix those before we can get CO, I mean, I, we can't get sure, get to occupy, occupy-
But there's no-
Occupancy.
But that alley still needs to be usable before the stipulacy comes into play, I mean, you know, the trash trucks use it every day, they have to be able to travel it, which means there has to be whatever surface that was on there previously put back on.
Yeah, so it's a timing, needs to be done sooner?
Well, I think it needs to be done as the job's done.
Well, like-
But if you're doing them, if you got multiples there, and you get two done, you don't want to put gravel on that one and then dig it back up again to do the next one, right?
But you're going to make their taps all at the same spot.
Pretty close on some of those.
I don't know, semantics, I'm not really sure what we want.
So, like, where I live, on the north side of my house, there's an alley, and one of the neighbors over there, they, they had their sewer lane dug up, and that was before I was there, I kind of maybe think there wasn't even a permit issued, but they dug across the alley, and then they just threw some dirt in and left, and it's just, it was a horrible mud hole, and they had zero intentions of fixing it, you know, and, but we already have meat in this ordinance to enforce that, we just didn't enforce it, you know. So, I guess, I guess where I'm coming from is that it's, it's all right to have this stuff, but we got to enforce it. I mean, you know, if we just let them walk away and don't do anything, and tomorrow we issue them another permit to go somewhere else and work, you know, it seems like to me, we ought to be doing policing a little better on, on what the whole job looks like.
I think the only thing I really don't like is that the enforcement, like, how much time is the enforcement part going to take? I mean, like you were saying a while ago, like, how, how long are we going to have to wait for someone to show up, and then, if we're waiting for that person to show up, we're still getting billed by the plumber, whatever.
Yeah, if he's sitting around for three or four hours waiting on them, he can't go to another job site.
I mean, and it's eighty bucks an hour, or whatever it is, you're, you're going to start earning some money over-
We do ask that they, that they communicate with us exactly what they would need, when they think they would need it. We, we don't want to go out if they're not through with the job. That's one thing we want to do at, at the end. Now, all they have to do is just call us, we'll make a point, we'll ask for them to say, okay, I'm at this level, and we just go out and look at it, let them go on. So, we try to get it there as fast as we possibly can.
But what if your inspector's not there for the day, I mean, what if, or site, what if, I mean, there's all kinds of things come up, you know?
It's, it's not a perfect deal, that's true.
What would you like to do, counsel, you got to do something.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
No.
Coffee?
No.
Brown?
Brown?
Yeah.
Williams?
No.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
No.
Yep.
A little side request of others, yes, because I was always taught to back things, so I think we're.
We, we already, we already have that, that's already in that ordinance.
If, if there would have been a way to, let's just say, you set up an appointment for the inspection or whatever, and then if that contractor did not do the job that they were supposed to do, that would be on them instead of charging the citizen. If we could do that somehow. I'm saying, then the contractor comes back and go, oh, well, we had to add this because, and then they send the bill to you instead. There's nothing, there's no safeguard for the citizen.
Alright, item thirteen, authorized payment of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and one dollars and eighty-seven cents to Craftsman Limited Partnership for the purchase and delivery of a big toy playground for Lions Park in accordance with the playground agreement dated August eighth, twenty twenty-two, upon receipt of such donated funds from Lions International in delivery and offload, offloading of the playground. Uh, you guys know there's been a committee, uh, set forth to raise money for the Lions Park down there, and they're doing a great job, amazing work. Uh, so this is, this is, uh, the, the playground equipment they purchased. Uh, Russ says at this time we have not received that money, so as soon as that money, uh, has been deposited in our account and the equipment shows up, we want to be able to pay, pay for it. Is that correct, Russ?
Yes.
Good thing.
I make a motion that we approve this payment to Craftsman Limited Partnership under the way that it's ordered.
Do a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you, counsel. Item fourteen, accept bids and authorize the purchase of two grasshopper front mo- mounted uh, mowers, I guess, for nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents uh, for the airport and twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the parts department. A total of forty thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from Sawgrass Equipment as the lowest responsible bidder. I guess for what I saw back here, that they, the only one that submitted a bid?
No, um, Terrence, you talked to, uh, Kenneman?
Yep.
P and K?
Yeah, Kenneman on two different types, the Toro and the, uh.
You wanna come up to the podium, please, or?
So I sent out, uh, bids for, uh, Toro, Skag, both of those were from Kenneman. Uh, P and K equipment, which I tried for two different mowers, um, there's a front deck mount and the regular. Um, they sent me the regular one, uh, it was a little bit more expensive. The front deck one, they said they couldn't even really do it because it's not on their system, and even if they did, we wouldn't see it for a year. So that kinda threw out the front deck on that. Um, Sawgrass on the, uh, the grasshopper. And then, uh, made a shot for VinTrak, which is a little bit bigger, bigger deck, all that. And, uh, it was, it was quite a bit more awesome machine, I watched a lot of videos on it. But this is what we had come up with, and this is kinda what. There was a lot of them right in there, the Toro was a little more expensive, the other ones were comparable, but.
But no one, no one submitted, submitted a bid except for Sawgrass, because that's the only bid we got, so I'm just saying.
No, I sent, um, I believe I sent you about.
There was, there was multiple pieces of that.
Yeah.
Okay, we just didn't make the package.
This was the lowest responsible.
Yes. And we could get it now.
Yeah, yeah, that was another big thing, out of all of them that I talked to, they have two of them in stock. And he's like, they're probably not gonna be here for very long once spring starts.
Yeah.
I mean, John Deere, theirs will fly off the showroom floor. And the other ones, they lean more toward the gas engines, so it's a little bit harder to, harder to get those, but.
Alright, well, thank you, Terrence.
Yes, sir.
Here's the money coming from C S O.
This is, whatever I talked about, the extra sales tax that we've collected so far this year, that's what we're gonna spend down.
So this wasn't in the budget?
No, these were not on the budget, um, for this year.
We really had plans to wait until its next fiscal year, but with the lag time and the supply chain not getting shorter in this particular line item of, of things we need, uh, grass is not gonna stop growing just because the supply chain is getting larger, so we decided we would, we would go for this right now anyway.
Since our budget kinda falls dead center of mowing season.
What would you like to do, counsel?
How bad are the ones you currently have?
Um, one of mine, I'm turning it into a spray rig, cause the, the deck pretty much gave up completely, and I can't find parts for it. It's about fifteen years now, that's an oh-four, so eighteen, nineteen years old. The, uh, other one's a oh-five, and it's, it's starting to wear the bolt holes bolt onto the deck and then onto the mount itself. Where they used to be holes, now they're elongated about that far, they're running out of meat. But they're just getting tired, they run, you know, ours run, you know, if it's a green summer, it, it'll run, you know, three to five days straight. And it's just, it's a lot of area, and it beats them up over time.
And Patty, your mower is a backup to the backup.
Yes, sir, it's an oh-one diesel John Deere. And it's on its last legs, I think. So, and did, John Deere's not even accepting any offers on anything remotely close to what we would need in the parks department for a year and a half. So.
But this does cover your needs?
I think it will, yes. Um, initially, I did some research and got some quotes on the VinTrak and the Steiner, um, and the John Deere. The VinTrak, like Terrence said, is an amazing machine, it's a multi-purpose tool that I would love, I think it would benefit multiple departments with, cause it's got several different mounts. But it's just, the price of one is what two grasshoppers would cost, so, um, it just didn't, you know, it looks real pretty, I didn't think we could go that far, so, but yeah, our, uh, like you said, the grass is not gonna stop growing, we've got nine parks, two lakes, and CC Lake is a huge lake, it takes us a full day to mow it. So, anything smaller would not work for us.
The ones that you're currently using, are they front deck, though?
Yeah, they're John Deere, uh, the fourteen forty-five front mount diesels, they don't even make the fourteen forty-five anymore, but.
Are there advantages to having the front deck over the, just a regular deck, is what I'm wondering?
As far as like the inclines that we mow, it, it keep its balance better, cause we have so many inclines that we can't mow straight up and down, which is why we'd want the front mount, cause it would keep it more even, less possibility of tipping it over, if you will.
It's one of the benefits of VinTrak.
Yes, it's amazing, and I blame it on Larry, he's like, hey, take a look at this, and now I really love mine, it's like, ah, you get it.
Pretty sweet.
It's all Larry's fault.
Not my fault, it is the great machine, no doubt about that, there's so many places that we can use it, so I do agree with you there, Patty.
Guess what I'm really getting at, are there places you can't mow if you don't have that front deck?
Uh, probably. I know there's a lot of hills at Rotary Park mainly, um, I actually almost tipped the John Deere that we're on last, was it two years ago? It wasn't working properly, and I no longer use that mower, it's, it's shut down, which was my main mower that I used. It's now just, we're using it as a parts mower, they wouldn't even take it in as a trade-in, cause they're so old. But, and they've lasted that long because we've maintained them.
Yeah.
We take really good care of our equipment, cause it's not cheap, and.
CC is where I was thinking about when I asked that question, of, and there are some pretty gnarly hills.
Even at the front, along Highway eighty-six, in that ditch line, there's several areas that we can't even get with our John Deere, we have to go out and weed eat it, cause it's so steep. But, um, after talking with Terrence and really looking at, at it, I think, cause it's got those two back, what do they call them, fork?
Those caster wheels?
Caster wheels. It keeps it, as opposed to just a mid-mount mower, so.
I know we've got, the current mowers that we've got are, uh, the mid-mounts. We've got one, one run where the access road slips off, and it goes down to the back end of the hangers. And with the current mower, we've pretty much got it down, those seventy-twos are really, really wide for a mid-mount. Um, but when you're running that, with, even with nice new turf tires, you're, you're actually sliding it at an angle. And whenever those things come unglued, it's, it's a ride.
They'll take you down the hill real quick.
I just don't wanna say yes to this, and then y'all get them and then go, well, we can't even use it, you know, for a lot of the areas we have.
It's a good mower, I got a grasshopper, up front, cut the weed eating down, having the deck up front, it floats good, rough terrain, it's good for that. And, uh, I like the way the drive shaft goes up to the deck too, cause your belts, you don't rely on belts having to travel up and down, it's just a solid shaft that goes up to run your deck, so. My two cents on it.
I've sold mowers for several years.
I do too.
Worked on ours several years.
And if we're talking mid-mount, if we're talking about a conventional tractor style, if that's what's being referred to as mid-mount, you don't wanna even consider that because of the time that it takes to mow. If you have a zero-turn deck out front, all the people I've sold to have come back and told me that I was right when I said you'll mow in half the time. It, just the maneuver time is so much better with a front-deck mower. You, you have to experience it to appreciate it, but a tractor style is old technology and not worth considering.
I just know that on those hills, when you get to the top of it, if you have a mid-mount, you don't have much ground clearance.
Yeah.
And with a, with a, uh, deck in the front, you can actually adjust that and pull over that with no problem.
There's a lot of advantages with the newer technology.
And it also works well with trees, like, cause you can get the deck in underneath the tree without it affecting your top, so.
How many, how many mowers do we have, is just those, just two?
Oh, no, we have more, but they're all old, for the most part, I don't think we have, we have a new one at BMAT, thanks to Toro.
Well, this is, yeah, the Parks and Rec's use on a regular basis, what, how many mowers do, do they have?
She's saying two.
Currently, I have two that we, we run, we have a third, we tried to fuse it, cause there's an oil leak in the steering column, and John Deere can't tell me what's wrong with it, I think David's actually looked at it too.
It's not cost effective.
It's not, which is why we're not using my mower, cause just to break down, it's a, correct me, we're on internal gearbox, if that makes sense. Just to break it down and figure out what was wrong with it, what's gonna cost anywhere between ten to fifteen thousand dollars, and that's, the mower's not even worth it.
It's a hydraulic steering motor, and it's leaking internally, and you have to tear a major part of the machine apart just to get to it. And then it'll need to be rebuilt, that steering motor need to be rebuilt and put back on.
So currently, I'm running two.
Lot of labor.
One is an oh-five, and then the one I run is an oh-one.
Are parts interchangeable on any of those three?
To the grasshopper?
No, to your.
Oh, yeah.
All three of those will interchange?
Yeah, and that's what we've been doing, um, over the last year and a half, um, is pulling parts off the mower that is now no longer usable and putting it on, replacing parts that are falling apart on the mower I'm using, or the one that, uh, my other employee Rachel is using, so.
And this is the only mower that you, you have a mower that you're using now, this will just be an upgrade? Yeah, well, I have a mower that's currently running, I have another mower that we used until the deck completely went shot, and then a third mower that is a, it's about an oh, oh-six sixty-inch Dixon, it's a, it's a residential mower, and on that thing, the motor's completely shot, and I got on Facebook, started looking around the marketplace, you can get the same mower for about fifteen hundred bucks, but for me to swap the engine, it's gonna cost three thousand.
Yep.
So. You know, we're to the point of it's, it's really good auctioner for parts, but that's about it. And I've been doing the same thing, the wheels and the casters are pretty much the same, uh, at least the rear wheels are compared to the other mowers, same size. So, if I have to swap a wheel out, it comes off that one, and we'll just kinda go from there.
So along the lines of that ballfield, did we evaluate if there was any options with Toro helping or anything like that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Along the lines of the ballfield mower, did we discuss this with Toro, see if there was any options of them helping with any?
He priced a Toro, it was a turbo, and it was twenty-two thousand something.
I don't, I don't think he's asking you if you priced a Toro.
Did we discuss with Toro if there's anything they could do to help?
No, we have not yet.
I mean, even if we had to pay, give it to us a cop or something, I mean, whatever.
I just, I don't, I just wondered if we had any conversation.
We'd love to have all Toros, no doubt about that.
Is our parks department responsible for BMAT?
I'm sorry?
Does the parks department, are they responsible for BMAT, or did they do their own?
BMAT has their own management and their own, uh, equipment. Which is in really good shape.
So this machine would be just for her parks department and just for the?
Airport.
Airport.
Right, one for parks, one for airport.
What did, what did Toro give us, one mower for the ballfield?
Yeah.
There was a second mower?
They went to the schools.
Oh, the school, okay, I thought there was a second mower somewhere.
At the same time.
Yeah, okay.
And two different models.
What would you like to do, counsel?
We have an awful lot of parks for Perry, I mean, Perry has more parks.
Oh, yeah, it takes a, it takes a ton, a ton of mowing, that's for sure.
And I, I think it's really important to keep our parks looking nice for visitors and for our pets and for Perry people. And since we have the money, um, set aside that we can use, I, I would like to make a motion that we accept a bid and authorize the purchase of the two, um, mowers.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I would question that we table this until we can find some, maybe see if we can get, not necessarily assistance, but a discounted rate.
Well, we've already got a motion on the table now.
Okay.
So we have to proceed with that.
And the, and this is state contract?
This is state contract. They normally go for twenty-seven thousand, twenty-five to twenty-seven.
Yeah, um, hills, they're already discounting it.
And we did go back and ask if they could, if we bought two, could they do better, and they said no.
Who's that?
Uh, grasshopper, Saw, Sawgrass.
I guess we do, cause we're paying, we're paying state contract prices.
Because they were already, these are already state.
But, but we didn't. But, but we didn't give Toro an opportunity to give us any options.
Yeah, I would like, I, I, I know my time's limited here, but I, I would like for us to cultivate some kind of relationship with the Toro company and find out who the go-to person is. And you, we may know, I don't know. But, and I don't, I don't think that we want to take advantage of the situation. But if there's, you know, they have a, have a plant here and I'm sure they would like to see us using their equipment. Just like whenever Ditch was, you know, they wanted us using their trenchers and their equipment here. So I, I think that we should develop that, that relationship with them. And, but anyway, we do have a, we do have a motion on the table. So if there's no further discussion.
Well, we'll add this to the discussion. We'll move on. Is that they said that if they don't get it now, that when summer comes, they're going to be able, isn't that true? Isn't that what you said?
Most likely. I have two sitting on the showroom floor.
It sounds, it sounds like they're going to be buying another one in the near future anyway. So there might be something, something that we look, look in the future to see if we can get some help.
I don't know what's, if we got a motion on the table, what we can do with that at this point, but...
Have to take a vote or...
We're just taking a vote. If it fails, then we can move on. If it doesn't fail, then it passes. It's either fail or pass right now, but the motion's on the table. So, roll call please.
Marshall, yes. White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Strel?
Yes. I do encourage management to take into consideration of the discussion we had tonight. Item fifteen, approve the following invoices by Myers Engineering Consulting Engineers Incorporated. Sixteen twelve North Twelfth Street Sanitation, or Sanitary Sewer Survey. Fourteen hundred eleven dollars and fifty cents. Fairway Edition Easement Review, five hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. Phase five sanitary sewer replacement project, one thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. And second, and Maple Drainage Evaluation, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents. You got anything you would like to tell us or just going to look pretty tonight or?
I was just planning on looking pretty, but I'm...
All right. We're going to motion just pay these bills.
Second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown? Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Strel?
Yes, thank you. Item sixteen, any new business that needs to come before the council this evening? Hearing none. Item seventeen, consider convening the executive session for the confidential communication between the city council and the city attorney concerning the pending claim of Christie McKitchens. If the public body, if the public body with the advice of his attorney determines disclosure of the seriously impaired ability for the public body to process the claim in the public interest.
So moved.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Brown? Williams?
Yes.
Bond?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Strel?
Yes, thank you.
Any motion to reconvene, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Marshall, here. White.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Here. Take any action with respect to executive session? Hearing none, item twenty, adjournment, please.
I guess.
Roll call.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes.
Michael.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Prairie Municipal Authority, February 21st, 2023 at 7:54. Roll call, please.
Wines.
Here.
White.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Strowler.
Here. Take any action with respect to executive session? Hearing none, item twenty, adjournment, please.
I guess.
Roll call.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes.
Michael.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Prairie Municipal Authority, February 21st, 2023 at 7:54. Roll call, please.
Wines.
Here.
White.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Strowler.
Here. Take any action with respect to executive session? Hearing none, item twenty, adjournment, please. Roll call.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Michael.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Prairie Municipal Authority, February 21st, 2023 at 7:54. Roll call, please.
Wines.
Here.
White.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bond.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I am to discuss and consider amendment to the hangar ground lease agreement to include a two-year optional extension.
Yeah, that's actually twenty-year option extension, but the number ended up wrong.
Oh, yes, it is wrong.
You know, we have, we went several years ago to a, to a form hangar ground lease, which the council approved. One of the main changes of that was changing the term of that hangar ground lease from five years to twenty years. When we're talking about these hangar ground leases, those are hangers that are out there, that have been out there for some period of time, in many instances for decades, Terrence can speak to it, and, and we charge currently $200 per year for that lease. Of course, one of the requirements are they need to have a plane in there, and of course, that makes it substantially different than any other storage, because, you know, a plane is a significant investment, and of course, the more planes we have, the better it is for our airport, for funding opportunities and like, so that's something that is good. We had some recommended amendments to that lease, all of which were made to this document with one, except they're just small things, with one exception, and that's what's being presented to you today, and that is, instead of it being a five-year lease or a twenty-year lease, they wanted, or requested a, a twenty-year term, and then an opportunity to have an additional twenty-year term at the end, if at the end of the original twenty years, they're in full compliance with the terms of the lease agreement. Because you approved the initial lease, and because this was a, you know, a major change, we felt that it was smart to bring it back to you, you know, it can be looked at in several ways. One, it's good to have airplanes in hangers that we don't own out at the airport. I think, secondly, I don't know that this city or any city has ever exercised any, you know, we want to keep your hangar at the end of the term, we're just happy to have pilots out there, and to have airplanes out there. On the other hand, you know, forty years is a long time, that's 2063, and, you know, a lot of things could happen between now and then, and as we've had these leases, we've always, and, and, you know, I've been here for thirty-seven of those years, we have always extended, you know, those leases when folks, when they, when they've come up, when they've run out of time, and when people have come in and asked for extensions, we've always extended this. However, the people that have those leases, you know, have children, and if they're going to make improvements to them, they, they would like to know that those improvements are something that they can hold on to longer than, certainly the five-year term and perhaps the twenty-year term, so getting that additional time could spur reinvestment in the, by the, by the lessies in those leases. So that, of course, is another reason. Now, I set the rule out, and the rule is you can't buy statute lease for longer than fi- fifty years, and that would be, you know, if you do ten years and four-year options, or you do twenty years and a thirty-year term, you can exceed fifty years under a lease agreement, so.
Terrence would be the only one left around, fifty years from now.
So, so that's kind of the issue. I think we handed out a document which shows, when we did this, we have a number of people that have, have approved the new lease, and theirs are in place and valid. If, if the council wants to extend the additional twenty-year lease, you know, you may want to go back to those that, that approved the agreement as you initially gave it, and provide for, for this amendment, to be fair to all the pilots out there.
I would think you start from the day and just give them all twenty years, I mean, that's what.
Well, well, that's the current thing. We're, we're, I mean, currently, anybody that signs gets a twenty-year agreement, and what's being asked for is, is set out in red, and that is, if everything's okay, they get another twenty years after twenty, so.
Are these, are these, Terrence, are these hangers, hangers that are owned by these people, or do we own any of these hangers?
We don't own any of them, they're, they're private.
Okay, alright.
They own them. We just have the.
Have the land.
The common dirt that they're sitting on.
Well, that's a big advantage, because people come over here, want to build a, build a hangar, and they want to know they can have it for a while, you know. It's kind of hard to get them to build a hangar on a five-year lease.
You know, Joe, when he built his, granted, it was before, I think it was kind of at the beginning.
Who?
Joe Woolslager, when he built that nice hangar down there. I think that was 160, and since then, it's gone up. If you built that same thing, two-hundred?
Yeah.
At least, so, that's a big investment on, on something like that.
Well, I'd like to do counsel. Authority members, I'm sorry, I'm running the council.
I know our constituents would like to see this used by, let's say, instead of written notice, be notified by registered return receipt mail, because of the fact that they travel, and even if they came in written mail and stuff, you know, they might would miss it, and I thought that was, you know, prepared to make the call and say this, you would like to see that, and I think we need to pay attention to our people.
I think that one is included in our current contract.
Is it?
In I, I believe, yeah. I believe, let me, let me double check that. Well, it is, it is, but.
I think it's been wronged, but.
Five, or, is it I?
Yes.
Yeah, I was looking on the, that front page where it said written, leasing's written notice.
Was there a second one that I missed?
No, I, that was just in the first page down there, it said written, lease or written notice, so.
I got you.
I might have moved it in the wrong place. Because if a person has built a hangar and they've spent thirty thousand dollars, they would like to get it by mail.
Any motion to reconvene, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Marshall, here. White.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Strowler.
Here. Take any action with respect to executive session? Hearing none, item twenty, adjournment, please.
I guess.
Roll call.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Prairie Municipal Authority, February 21st, 2023, at 7:54. Roll call, please.
Wines. Marshall.
Here.
White.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Strowler.
Here. I do declare a quorum. Item one is consent agenda, one item, a minute from last meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes, thank you. Item two, discuss and consider amendment to the hangar ground lease agreement to include a two-year optional extension.
Yeah, that's actually twenty-year option extension, but the number ended up wrong.
Oh, yes, it is wrong.
You know, we have, we went several years ago to a, to a form hangar ground lease, which the council approved. One of the main changes of that was changing the term of that hangar ground lease from five years to twenty years. When we're talking about these hangar ground leases, those are hangars that are out there, that have been out there for some period of time, in many instances for decades, Terrence can speak to it. And, and we charge currently $200 per year for that lease. Of course, one of the requirements are they need to have a plane in there. And, of course, that makes it substantially different than any other storage because, you know, a plane is a significant investment. And, of course, the more planes we have, the better it is for our airport, for funding opportunities and like. So, that's something that is good. We had some recommended amendments to that lease, all of which were made to this document with one, except they're just small things, with one exception, and that's what's being presented to you today. And that is, instead of it being a five-year lease or a twenty-year lease, they wanted, or requested, a twenty-year term, and then an opportunity to have an additional twenty-year term at the end, if at the end of the original twenty years, they're in full compliance with the terms of the lease agreement. Because you approved the initial lease, and because this was a, you know, a major change, we felt that it was smart to bring it back to you. You know, it can be looked at in several ways. One, it's good to have airplanes in hangars that we don't own out at the airport. I think, secondly, I don't know that this city or any city has ever exercised any, you know, we want to keep your hangar at the end of the term. We're just happy to have pilots out there, and to have airplanes out there. On the other hand, you know, forty years is a long time. That's 2063. And, you know, a lot of things could happen between now and then. And, as we've had these leases, we've always, and, you know, I've been here for thirty-seven of those years, we have always extended, you know, those leases when folks, when they, when they've come up, when they've run out of time, and when people have come in and asked for extensions. We've always extended this. However, the people that have those leases, you don't have children, and if they're going to make improvements to them, they, they would like to know that those improvements are something that they can hold on to longer than, certainly the five-year term and perhaps the twenty-year term. So, getting that additional time could spur reinvestment in the, by the, by the lesses in those leases. So, that, of course, is another reason. Now, I set the rule out, and the rule is you can't buy statute lease for longer than fi- fifty years, and that would be, you know, if you do ten years and four-year options, or you do twenty years and a thirty-year term, you can't exceed fifty years under a lease agreement. So...
Terrence would be the only one left around, fifty years from now.
So, so that's kind of the issue. I think we handed out a document which shows, when we did this, we have a number of people that have, have approved the new lease, and theirs are in place and valid. If, if the council wants to extend the additional twenty-year lease, you know, you may want to go back to those that, that approved the agreement as you initially gave it, and provide for, for this amendment, to be fair to all the pilots out there.
I would think you start from the day and just give them all twenty years. I mean, that's what...
Well, that's the current thing. We're, I mean, currently, anybody that signs gets a twenty-year agreement, and what's being asked for is, is set out in red, and that is, if everything's okay, they get another twenty years after twenty, so...
Are these, are these, Terrence, are these hangars, hangars that are owned by these people? Or do we own any of these hangars?
We don't own any of them. They're private.
Okay. All right.
They own them. We just have the...
Have the land.
The concrete, the dirt that they're sitting on.
Well, that's a big advantage because people come over here, want to build a, build a hangar, and they want to know they can have it for a while, you know? It's kind of hard to get them to build a hangar on a five-year lease.
You know, Joe, when he built his, granted, it was before, I think it was kind of at the beginning.
Who?
Joe Woolslager, when he built that nice hangar down there. I think that was 160. And since then, it's gone up. If you built that same thing, 200?
Yeah.
At least. So, that's a big investment on, on something like that.
Well, I'd like to do counsel. Authority members, I'm sorry, I had to counsel.
One of our constituents would like to see this used by, let's say, instead of written notice, be notified by registered return receipt mail, because of the fact that they travel, and even if it came in written mail and stuff, you know, they might would miss it. And I thought that was, you know, prepared to make the call and say, Miss, you would like to see that, and I think we need to pay attention to our people.
I think that one is included in our current contract.
Is it?
In I, I believe. I believe. Let me, let me double check that. Well, it is, it is, but... Five, or, is it I?
Yes.
Yeah. I was looking on the, that front page where it said, written, leasing's written notice.
Is there a second one that I missed?
No. I, that was just in the first page down there. It said, written, lease or written notice, so...
I got you.
Maybe it's in the wrong place. Because if a person has built a hangar and they've spent $30,000, they would like to get it by mail. And then, another concern was, and Gene, let me find it, he would like to see maybe that ninety days changed to, like, 180 days, because when you have to contract to construct a hangar or something, with the construction environment, the way it is, a lot of times you can't get people there to do the work and get it started and get the permits in that short a time.
Yeah, it was sixty days, and they recommended ninety days, and that change was made. So, that is one of the changes that I felt...
Well, he said ninety days was good, but it could be 180 days. Said he would, that would have been better.
I think, I, I think with respect to your first comment, okay, I, I think that you make a, a good point. I, I would say that that return receipt, registered return receipt would be placed under six A, thirty days notice of intention to terminate. We should place that there. That's kind of the critical, the, the critical one. And, and I would say that I would probably pick it up right there.
Yeah.
Which is, which is, you know, termination of the lease, let's, let's give, let's send it by certified mail to make sure that they get it. So, we could, we could add that, certainly. And, and if you want, I don't have a problem with that ninety to 100, you know, duty to remove a hangar would take you a while to get somebody to come on and do that. So, whether it's, you know, sixty, or 120, or 180, six months seems like a long time. But, you know, it's...
Well, if you have someone else wanting that spot, and he's going to move, I mean, and...
You'd want it sooner than later.
And say you're not, you quit paying rent.
Well, I think you'd still have to be paying rent, if that was there, wouldn't you?
Not necessarily, I guess.
Well, no, that, that might be one of the reasons that you terminate the lease, and then this would give them a right to remove the hangar.
So, if they're not paying rent, and you have a spot, and someone says, well, I'll take it, but I need it, you know? I think six months is a little extreme, myself.
So, this one, if they didn't remove it, do we, we don't have to give them the 180 days to remove it? We could act. And the person, to your point, I think we, could we, the person wanting it, if we terminated, we could, if they really wanted it that bad, they could tear it down, kind of deal?
What is, okay, let's talk about that. What if someone just terminated, doesn't pay anymore, just walks away and leaves it there?
Then it's our hangar. It's our, you know, just like if somebody built a house on your property.
Yeah.
And they ran out of lease, or they didn't have a lease. You know that one guy that built that place on somebody's property on the other side, and never had a lease? You know, when you do that, you, you just improve somebody else's property.
So, so how long do they have? So, what you're saying, let's say ninety days, okay? What it says now, at the end of the ninety days, if they haven't tore that down, it's ours?
If the hangar's not removed in ninety days, the lessor's option, the hangar should become the property of the lessor. Yeah, it becomes ours. It's one of those, you know, provisions that...
But are we actually providing them a right to that?
Yeah, they're going to have a right. They're going to have an option to do that.
That was my question.
You can put ninety days with the option of an extension upon application or something. I mean, I don't know what you, but I, I think that in ninety days, you could do something. Or maybe if you go another, maybe go to 100, 120 days or something, but...
So, does the city not own the property?
We do own the property.
Yes. Subject to their lease.
And they build the airplane hangar on our property.
And they pay us an annual lease payment. Right now, it's $200 per year. But they're required to keep an airplane in it.
He mentioned something, that there was a city in Oklahoma, he had a concern for the renewal option, five to twenty years, but, but there was a city in Oklahoma that was, that had a designated hangar that became city property. But the city can't go in and claim the hangar, can they?
No, not less, if they're not paying rent, and we terminate their lease for failure to pay rent, and their lease expires, well, their hangar is on our property, and that hangar is ours. Yes.
For any reason, they invalidate the lease.
Yes.
And we terminate it.
Yeah. Hasn't happened.
I was going to say, that was my next, we haven't terminated any.
Thirty-seven years hasn't happened. Yeah. At least during that period. I've never terminated anybody's lease out there that, that I can remember. And, and if we did, we didn't take possession of their, their hangar, I mean, if that did happen, we just re-leased it, you know, for two, you know, a hundred, it used to be a hundred dollars a month, or a, a year. It's a year. It's an annual payment.
I think one of my biggest things is, is, I, I believe we would like to try and entice people to build hangars and, and, and I know if I were looking to invest, I would be very hesitant at five years. I'd be, twenty, twenty's still, for, you know, I know we can't go for fifty, but anything we can do to entice people to build and make that place a better, better place, I'd like to do it.
Well, I think that's our, that was originally what they did. They, they leased it to the, the hangar owners, and so that they would build the, I mean, the city couldn't afford to build a hangar, so they arranged it for this way, so people would come in and build hangars, to, to build it up.
That's how, that's how most airplane, airport hangars occurred.
If someone...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
If someone passes in those twenty years, what happens?
It, it's a right of theirs, and they can, they can assign it. Now, it does provide no assignment without written consent of us, but, you know, I mean, we have never not permitted an assignment.
As long as they're keeping the building and making the payments.
They have rights to it.
So, if we approve the extension of twenty more years, after it comes to the end, and so it's forty years down the road, these people are still alive, but they want to sign it over to their kids, can their, whoever they want to give it to or sell it to, can they take over the, the lease at the end of forty years, if it's in the same family, but not the same person?
Well, at the end of forty years, it would be ours.
The hangar?
The hangar. Yeah, the lease would be over. And it would technically be our hangar. But, you know, when, when that has happened, and it's happened many times, because these lease agreements were only five years, we would re-up it every time. I mean, we have never not re-upped or not allowed an assignment or a transfer of a hangar. And the reason is, is because we want the planes there.
Right.
Because we get points for the planes, and we get grants based on the number of planes that we have there. And the money is real good. I mean, we're not making money off renting these, these hangars, or, you know, ground lease. But we are making good money off the number we have here. And I think, Derek, you make a good point. You know, if folks know that they can sign a hangar lease agreement here for forty years, that's something that's, that's a very, that's a real plus.
Is this gentleman a hangar owner, and would you like to say something?
Yeah. I think the, the option to renew...
Matt, would you come up to the podium, please?
I think, yeah. To be able to do your twenty years is great, and then to know, as expensive as things are these days, to be able to know that you can do another twenty as long as you're, you know, behaving and paying the rent, not making a mess, is great. And I think people are a lot more likely to invest, if that's the case. It would be nice to know what happens after that twenty, you know, the second twenty years. But, I mean, I won't be here. I assume that Terrence could well be.
So, so Terrence, in fifty years, he's the only one going bigger, man.
Yeah.
That's dangerous. He's talking like we're further apart in ages. We're not that far apart.
I do think people are much more likely to invest, given the, the ability to keep, you know, to keep things going.
Well, Bryce's opinion was that we would always, we would never take the, take the, the hangar in forty years, but let's face it, in forty years, we're going to have a different attorney, and he may have a different opinion.
Well, I think that's the one, I think that's the one negative, is we're going to have a different council, too. We're, we're, we're making a decision that affects many councils to come, whether it's good or not. I mean...
And Matt, in, in forty years, the, the whole airplane perspective might be...
Could be very different.
I suspect things are just going to be more expensive. It'll be more. And in thirty-five years, if somebody wants to buy my hangar, they'll come to the council and request the permission to, you know, buy it and get a lease. And maybe they could just start with the same lease from zero. Say, they're going to spend all this money on the hangar, which by then will be even more expensive.
Yeah.
And does it start again then? I assume that's what you did.
And this only affects the current, I mean, whoever we sign the agreement with from now until somebody, another council decides to change that, right? I mean...
Yeah, well, I mean, they will have the right.
They will.
Yeah, they'll have the right.
But any new ones?
Yeah.
We, I mean...
Yeah, any new ones, you can make any change you want.
The current council...
But, but once you've done it, it's, this is the PMA. PMA can make these kind of promises, and, and it's binding.
Right. So, if somebody buys my hangar in ten years, they'll, they'll start with a new lease?
Not necessarily. We have done that on many occasions. We have done that. And we have, because we have always renewed.
Right.
I mean, we've always renewed, so it's never been an issue. And the reason is, is that person normally is going to get your plane.
Right.
Or they're going to bring their own plane.
Right.
And we're welcoming the plane.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's what it's all about. That we're not in the storage business.
No.
We're in the plane storage business, which is completely different.
Well, I don't like the idea of, say, say Matt's hangar, but let's say in, in, in eighteen years, you want to sell your hangar, and, and then that guy, and, and I guess he could renew for another twenty, but you say not necessarily.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be, he's going to have rights under this agreement. But it's going to be a new council, and definitely another...
Yeah, so my, my, my thought is that someone's not going to buy his hangar for, for $100,000 and think, I got three years on lease, and it's a...
That's what happens.
You know?
No, they're going to always want to know the status of the lease, and the sale will always be based on whatever the status of that lease is, you know, and, and what they can get on that lease. But some of these are decisions that are, you know, that probably need to be...
Typical government, let's, what else worry about it?
Yeah, that probably, that probably need to be made by someone else. I mean, if, if you approve this, you're being very lucrative. You're being very, 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 very fair.
Yeah.
Thirty-five years ago, everybody's going to find cars by now, and we don't...
And go part with their house.
I, I think it'd be good to, to do the twenty plus the twenty, as expensive as things are getting.
I agree, a hundred percent.
I mean, it's, it's gone from, you can't build a, you're not even allowed to build your own hangar anymore. You know, years ago, you could take a little drill pipe and build something, and it'd be awesome. There were lots.
I think, I think my dad's built like four out there.
And they're all still there, and they'll probably be there from now on. But these days, we do everything to code, and it just costs a lot more. The hangars are a lot nicer, but there's an awful lot more money involved. It really is. And it's all good, though. It's nice to have nice hangars. And there'll be more airplanes coming, and that'd be great.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, so if any of y'all don't know, the, the Hineen Brothers, is that how you say it?
Hineen Brothers.
He, he's the one, he's the one that, that left, and they bought his business. That's who that is. Matt was our spray pilot for many years. And he says that that whole deal, the last couple of years, that how they haven't been doing much work around here, can't get them, that's going to change.
It is, yeah. They've got a new, new local guy on, on site now, and the last year was just awful. Bad lack of rain, expensive chemicals, just all the worst. It's a perfect storm for a bad year, which would be long overdue for. But things are, but things are probably going to get better.
I can tell you, they've hauled in several totes.
Yeah, yeah, they're getting ready.
I don't know how many's in that building, but it's a lot. So...
They're ready to start spraying.
That's great news in itself. All right, council, or authority, we got to do something. Somebody pitch something.
Would we, does any of Marshall approve the new lease agreement?
Yeah, with the return receipt request language in the, in the termination clause.
And, and removed?
Yes, yes, and the and removed, yes.
What about the, the extension of the...
Oh, if you want to go, yeah, do you want to go to 180 or...
Bryce, what do you say when the motion should be?
Well, I don't know. Do, do we want to do that?
I don't like the 180 days, but... A hundred, I'd be good with 120, but I think we'd write it out too far.
I'd go for 120. I'll compromise.
So, was that a motion?
That, that's a suggestion, and it goes on the, the language part.
So, take out the and, 120, return receipt requested under the termination clause, and provide the twenty-year extension. Anyone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Curtis. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Marshall, yes. White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown. Williams.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Marshall, yes. White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Call over the regular meeting of the Prairie Facilities Authority, February 21st, 2023, at 8:21. Roll call, please.
Wines. Marshall.
Here.
White.
Here.
Coffee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Strowler.
Here. I do declare a quorum. There's one item, the consent agenda from our last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall, yes. White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.
Yes. Marshall, adjourned.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall, yes.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Coffee.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Strowler.